This meeting is called for order on Tuesday, October the 7th. The invocation will be led by Mr. Joe Minchin, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Mr. David Parkinson.
Please join me in prayer. Your head and the Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day. We just thank you for the changes of the seasons and the reminder that you are the creator of the universe and creator of our lives, dear Lord. We just pray that you'll watch over this board tonight as the decisions that we have to make, it'll be pleasing in your side and beneficial to our school system here. We thank you so much for our teachers, administrators, and our workers as they deal with the students each day that they may look forward to anticipate in teaching these kids how to read, how to work math, how to enjoy science and English and all the subjects they teach, dear Lord, that they may benefit from that. We just pray that you're watching God us and give us our many, many sins and Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Let's do this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is adoption of the Jenna F. Prinett. Can I get a motion?
Go ahead.
Can I get a second? All in favor? All opposed? The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, the regular session of September the 9th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Make the motion when you approve the minutes.
That's by Mr. Hunter Smith. Can I get a second? Okay, Mr. Joe Minchin, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognition of the National Merit Semifinalists led by Mr. John Young. This is Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. This is an awesome opportunity to get to be able to do this for one of my former students. She was a seventh grader at Ruston High School's principal there. But tonight, we're recognizing Tricia Pangillan as a National Merit Semifinalist. Students who qualify for this award have to have a qualifying score on the PSAT and the NMSQT, the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And she scored actually in the top one percent. I did a little bit of research, so we had 198 in Louisiana last year. Don't have the number for this year, but Tricia is an outstanding student and we want to present this award to her tonight.
And Tricia, can you introduce who you brought on? Ms. Henderson, Russ, the high school counselor this year as well, but tell us who you brought tonight?
I brought my mother and my father, Jennifer and Uchi Pangillan.
Are there any comments from the board members?
Congratulations. It's an incredible honor and kudos to your parents. Congrats to your parents, all the hard work that you guys have put in and everybody within the system that has been a part of that success. Congratulations.
Board members, I would like to recognize Miss Amanda Simmons, Superintendent H. Thank you for the beautiful basket. We appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Okay, at this time, we would like to invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you're, you're welcome to leave if you need to leave. Thank you for joining us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Lincoln Parish Library. The presenter tonight is the executive director of Jeremy Bollum. Jeremy, okay, yes. And do you have a guest with you or you?
Maybe they're in the hallway. I'm by myself. President Phillips, members of the board and superintendent Durritt and guests, my name is Jeremy Bollum. I'm the director of Lincoln Parish Library where our mission is to enrich, inspire and educate. I gratefully stand before you tonight to talk about some of the services and programs that we offer at the library and hope that you may deem some of them worthy to be able to help you and your work to help students succeed in the parish. Beyond the physical and digital books that we have for leisure reading and research in the libraries, which is what we're known for, we also have many other things. One of the main things through the state partnership with the State Library of Louisiana, we offer several specialized online services such as Homework Louisiana. If you're not a promoter with Homework Louisiana, it sets students up with a live online tutor to help them with their classes. It also has the ability for students to upload samples of writing to have it critiqued also by a live tutor. We have another database called MoMetrix, which is a test preparation database, and it is substantial in the kind of tests that it would be able to help students prepare for, PSAT, ACT, any kind of trade school tests that are out there too, to help people get jobs later in life. We also have two unique databases, one by the State Library and one that we have ourselves, Mango Languages, which helps you learn foreign languages. I know that's part of curriculum, but sometimes people are just curious as well at the same time. One of the databases that Lincoln Parish Library picked up of its own accord, which sounds kind of juvenile on its own, but when you're a learner of a foreign language, it's good to be able to see the written word next to the English word. So we have this other database called Language. It's called Loat for Kids, and it's basically storytime books in about 60 different languages, and it would help them, you know, see the sentence structure with the English underneath. So for any kind of learner, it's a great way of getting a handle on the language. We also have spaces for study. We have study rooms for parents to bring in kids who need quiet spaces to do without distraction and also places for tutors to meet privately with their students. We, of course, offer all of our regular programming, which includes that social interaction that a lot of kids need outside of school and home to build those relationships of community. Not only do we have storytime, but we also have family crafter news, teen and tween time, which usually have some kind of element of the steam things, especially for the tweens, and of course, other special events that we hold throughout the year. We've just had our Fall Into a Book Festival. Every year we fall into a book. Last year, we fell into Alice in Wonderland. It includes carnival games and prizes, and then we invite local children's authors and illustrators to also join us at the fair. Part of the teen group at the library also has a volunteer opportunity component. We have a teen advisory board that works closely with the teen coordinator. She will help several of them get their service hours needed for clubs and for graduation and for any kind of thing where they're doing college applications where that's handy. They helped with the Fall Into a Book Festival. They helped assemble games, put prizes together, that kind of thing. And our Friends of the Library also offers ways for teens to help out at their book sales. Of course, our bread and butter that everybody knows that the library is good for is summer reading. I can only tell you that that's not only fun for the kids because we provide incentives, but it also fills that gap between the end of school and the next year where kids often forget what learning is. But the best thing that the library has to offer is the dedicated staff that we have that will not only connect you to all the services that I've just mentioned, but are also willing to tell you anything that you would need to know and come to you where you are. So feel free to let us know if there's anything that we can do for you in the class, in an event, if you need a filler for entertainment, what have you. Ask us. You'd be surprised what we could possibly do for you. To stay in the know for the library, just want to give us a couple of plugs because we always have things going on. You can follow us on Facebook and Instagram. We also now have a digital newsletter that's available on our website. And while you're at our website, sign up for our new text alerts where you can get text reminders of things that are coming up at the library. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight, and if you need any further information, do not hesitate to reach out to me. I love talking about the library. You can't tell. Thank you.
So are there any questions or comments? This time? Okay, we look forward to the partnership and thank you for coming. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that we need to discuss? The next item on the agenda is new business, 8.1, approve quit clam D and act of correction, Superintendent Durritt.
So this is just correcting something from 1984. Lincoln Parish School Board, this is Old Hillcrest's school site, as I understand. That site was sold to Hollis and Adagre ground back in 1984, and it was basically recorded wrong at the, in the courthouse. And this is just correcting that. We did not, we've not occupied anything there or done anything with that land. It was understood. I've researched the fact. We've had our attorneys look at it. There's nothing that we thought we still owned. We thought that was sold. It was just filed incorrectly back in 1984, and this is just to correct that, but we needed to bring it to the board to get y'all to approve that.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, can I get a motion?
So move.
Okay, Hunter Smith, can I get a second? Ms. Donna Dolls, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 8.2, we're going to request for authorization to publicly share FCC Form 470 and RFP. Seth Britzweig.
I'm just gonna stay over here. The Lincoln Parish School District needs to post or share an FCC Form 470 using the E-Rate program and corresponding request for proposal to initiate a competitive bidding process for category one services. These services are for the new Wain Circuit, for the new Ruston High School softball complex. The FCC governs the E-Rate program. The FCC will pay 90% of the cost, but Lincoln Parish School Board will pay its portion of the 10% for the category one services contingent upon approval of the Form 470 application. My recommendation is that the board grant permission to post or share the FCC Form 470 and corresponding RFP to solicit bids from service providers for the RHS softball complex in accordance with state law and local policies, and grant the superintendent permission to accept a qualified bid that meets the specifications outlined in the Form 470 and the RFP.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public? Can I get a motion?
A move that we accept this request for authorization.
Second motion by Mr. Joe Minchin, second by Mr. Hancock. All in favor? All opposed? 8.3, consider upgrades to Simsboro School Cafeteria. Cody?
Carrico.
Carrico.
Good evening. So the Simsboro Cafeteria is in need of upgrades to better serve our students and staff. Much of the existing equipment has exceeded its commercial life expectancy results and increased downtime and repair expenses. In addition, the equipment is not as efficient and no longer meets current standards, which inhibits our daily production and operations. In order to ensure the food service can continue to safely and effectively operate, administration is recommending the replacement of old equipment. Example is ovens, steamers, ranges, work tables, storage shelves, and purchase also a new walk-in cooler freezer. The total estimated cost of these upgrades is approximately $220,000. So the recommendation is board give district administration permission to move forward with upgrades of approximately $220,000 for the Simsboro Cafeteria. So I'm asking permission to advertise for bids to purchase the commercial equipment and to accept the lowest responsive bidder for this equipment at Simsboro.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Will we use our own labor to install this or do we have to, is that part of the plan?
We would probably look at doing turnkey if possible, and then, because we are very short on our staff in maintenance, so we would be looking to do a turnkey.
Are there any questions, other questions from board members, comments? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, can I get a motion?
Make the motion when you accept the bid.
Okay.
Recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Donna Dolls, can I get a second? Okay, Ms. Debbie Abrams, all in favor? All opposed? 8.4, request for permission to purchase buses, Assistant Superintendent John Young.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So in order to provide safe and efficient bus service for our students in Lincoln Parish, we do purchase buses now on a yearly basis. This current request is to buy five buses, and as our fleet agents, we do replace buses as needed. The request for these five new buses will be similar specs as we have previously gotten with it being air-conditioned for our students. And our recommendation tonight is that the board grant permission to advertise for the bid for five new reused buses and grant the superintendent permission to accept a qualified bid that meets our specs, including air conditioning.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Where does, where do these five buses fit us in our entire fleet with it being 100% air-conditioned? We're getting closer.
I can get you a number on that exactly. We have about 80 in the fleet, but when we take five off, I'm pretty sure it'll be five ones that aren't air-conditioned, so it's gonna be close to being 100%.
Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, can I get a motion? Okay, Hunter Smith, can I get a second? And all in favor? And all opposed? 8.5, consider employees supplemental benefit offering, Ms. Juanita Duke and Superintendent Rick Durritt.
All right, good evening. We have been working to try to get our supplemental benefits offered together. As you realize, last meeting we named Pelican Benefit Advisors and Gallagher Benefits as the TPA for the school systems supplemental benefit program for our employees. And we have received proposals and reviewed those with Pelican Benefit Advisors and Gallagher Benefits, and we have recommendations that we'd like to make in changing some of those products as we have outlined. We do have representatives from Pelican Benefit Advisors here, Mr. Scott Walker, our lovely community representative, and we're glad he's here and the work that he's done on getting this proposal to us. We feel like there are some great benefits, competitive pricing, lower costs for our employees, so we look forward to getting that implemented for payroll deductions to start in January. This is going to be for critical illness, cancer policy, long-term disability, prove voluntary life insurance, universal life, universal life with long-term care, vision insurance, flexible spending accounts for medical independent care, savings accounts, and also dental insurance. These others are just replacement products, but the dental insurance is going to be a new fully insured product. It's going to be offered to our employees. On the next agenda item, we'll talk about that, about the change rate, funded plan for our dental to move to a fully insured plan to offer this to our employees with competitive benefits that are the same or equal to current benefits that are offered under our self-funded plans. And then also, we are going to retain the payroll deductions that we have in place with a grandfather, a legacy policies that are with American Public Life, just because those are some richer plans, some very old plans that have some great benefits that you can't find anymore, so we're going to retain those on payroll deductions for the employees that have those. So with that, we would like to request permission, well, unless Scott wants to talk about anything, I know he's getting ready for open room coming up later on in early November.
So we have enjoyed the last month of working through all of the proposals and the various meetings that we've had and feel like we've made a lot of progress in coming up with what we believe is a very solid offering on all of the supplemental benefits. In many cases, being able to enhance the benefit at the same price or keep the benefits the same at a lower price, and in a couple of instances, enhance the benefit and lower the price. And so it's been a tedious process, a labor-intensive process, but we're grateful for the leadership of Ms. Juanita Duke and Mr. Durritt, the superintendent. They have been great in that, and we appreciate the opportunity to carry this business forward.
Thank you, and we do have some great opportunities with guaranteed issues on many of these products for members to be able to get enrolled in some benefits they might not otherwise have the opportunity to enroll.
Of course.
Yes.
How does this affect retirees?
The only thing. Well, I mean, we're going to be sending out a lot of communication to retirees. We know they like to communicate with us a lot, and so we're going to have to communicate with them well. But, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. We need to visit with the carrier to determine how that process is going to work, because they're going to be assisting us with the enrollments. But the retirees will be offered, the ones who have our self-funded dental plan now, will be offered the opportunity to purchase this dental program as well. So they'll be given that opportunity so they will not be, have that coverage displaced.
No, I think we went through a process, interviewed, listened to a lot of proposals, and I think this one was a very good one for our employees, and it is supplemental, so they have a choice to purchase and do that, but it is some great opportunities with some great pricing.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Any other questions? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public? Can I get a motion? Okay, Mr. Matt, can I get a second?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, Mr. Anderson. Can, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion here. Okay, next item, eight point seven, approved payment of November salary supplement check, Ms. Juanita Duke.
Okay, so, uh, it is at this meeting that we request approval to distribute the November, what we call the thirteenth check to our fall body.
Right back, right back.
See that?
Six. Six. No, we're the health, I'm sorry, health plan.
Oh, okay, okay, eight six. I was following her lead.
Yeah. We're just trying to keep everybody on.
All right. Um, so, okay, so health plan renewal, um, for twenty twenty six. It's challenging every day to try to, uh, come up with a plan that's affordable and make some benefits for, um, for our health plan. Uh, we are glad that we have Brown and Brown working with us. We have our agents here, uh, Jason Huffman and Stacy Van Veen, who are here, um, and I will call Jason up to kind of present the information on the renewal. Uh, we're glad for the work that they've done. Uh, part of the recommendation that's gonna be made here is to discontinue the self-funded health, uh, dental program, uh, as of December the thirty first. It'll be a seamless transition whenever we work with that fully insured carrier to get everyone's friends and active employees and retired members, uh, transitioned over, um, so that there's no gap in coverage there. Uh, but we feel like it's going, we're gonna have a great plan, uh, for that. And then, um, I will defer to Jason and follow up, um, if you don't mind, just recap our renewal.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Williams, Superintendent Durritt, members of the board. Again, my name is Jason Huffman. I'm here with my colleague Stacy Van Veen from Brown and Brown, and we're just gonna go over the highlights of where it stands currently with your self-funded, uh, health program and then, uh, lead into that discussion about the renewal. You should have in your packets a little, uh, printed booklet with some school buses on the front. And Mr. Young, I, I assure you that all of these school buses are air-conditioned, so the, uh, the complimentary report from Ms. Duke is also worth noting, so that's the, uh, the handout that looks like this with a few charts on the front. So probably the best way to think of this is the first two pages that we'll go through, and I promise I'm not gonna read you this whole booklet, but please, uh, feel free to dig in on any of the details and any questions that you might have, I'll be more than happy to entertain. But the first two pages of content are really about where we stand now. How has that plan performed? What are the claims looking like? And then that's gonna lead us into, uh, a look toward the future. As Ms. Duke mentioned, medical costs are always a challenge. That's nothing, uh, unique to Lincoln Parish School Board. That's true across Louisiana and across the country. Uh, what we will draw your attention to, so this top graph here is looking at both, uh, medical and pharmacy costs over the last couple of years. The blue shading is for, uh, the medical, the red shading is for pharmacy. And then just below that are the per-member per-month charges, uh, per-member per, per-month claims totals is a better way to phrase that, uh, over the last, uh, two years as well. And I've added that dotted line in there, that's a least squares regression line, which I'm not gonna go into the details on what that is, but essentially you can think of that as, that's where our claims would have continued if we had stayed on the same path as last year in twenty twenty four. Remember, in twenty twenty five, the board made the decision to make that change over to United Healthcare. Where we were heading before is that dotted line. So those claims costs continue to increase, continue to increase, and you see a little bit of good news here in twenty twenty five, and that our per-member per-month claims have now come down below that dotted line. And I've got a couple of bullet points on the next page, if you flip over, through six months of claims, and I know that's not up-to-the-minute data, but it's the best comparable data that we would, uh, have to share, uh, right now. Medical claims over the, the first six months are about at three million in twenty twenty five. If we compare that to last year, we're at four point six million at that same point in the year. So that's a thirty-four percent reduction in cost, uh, that we've already seen, uh, come into play to, to be realized, uh, for the, the teachers and the staff and the family members across Lincoln Parish School Board. So that's the good side of the news there. Uh, the, the other more challenging, uh, part, and you can see this on the first graph that I shared with you, the blue and the red, is that those, uh, pharmacy costs do continue to increase. The, again, that's not unique to Lincoln Parish, that's true across the country. That's becoming a larger and larger percentage of medical claims, uh, everywhere. Now, what we can report is that there have been over one million dollars in rebates received, uh, by Lincoln Parish, again, through the first six months. That's even a little bit shy of where we expected to be at that point. We were hoping to be closer to one point two or one point three million. Now, the first quarter is always gonna be first quarter of the year, so January, February, March is always gonna be a little bit lower, uh, than the rest of the year because, uh, members are meeting their pharmacy deductible at that point and so on. But, um, what we did notice is that the actual number of prescriptions is a little bit lower than it was in twenty twenty four. And so that's part of that difference. That's part of the reason why the rebates haven't been, uh, quite up to what we had projected, uh, the first time. But we do expect that to increase over the last two quarters, where we'll probably finish at about two point two million. Okay? Um, I'll, uh, not belabor the point on the dental claims, only to make note of the fact that the, uh, change in premium that you all approved last year is looking good and will cover the costs for twenty twenty five calendar year expenditures. So that leads us toward the future. What does the renewal look like? Uh, the first thing that I'll point out at the top of this, uh, page three here is that the Medicare Advantage Plan has already been approved for renewal by you at the, at the September board meeting, but it's worth noting that the renewal from a year ago, again, before we made that switch, uh, was projected at four hundred eighty-six dollars per month per member, and we were able to reduce that to three hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, per member per month. So that has already saved Lincoln Parish, uh, close to a million dollars. Into next year, those costs go up a little bit, but again, compared to where we were before, it's gonna be almost half a million dollars in savings. So even with those, uh, premiums going up a little bit, Lincoln Parish is in a very good place compared to, uh, to a lot of folks, uh, that have that, that plan, that type of plan in place. How about the renewal itself? So the bottom half of this page has some bullet points on claims administration. That's a nice, easy one. We have a multi-year contract with United Healthcare, so no increase at all. Stop-loss coverage is something that Stacy and I and our team are still working on. We have firm offers in hand for essentially the exact same coverage, so the same, uh, specific deductible, uh, at a fifteen percent increase. It's not the best offer in the world, it's certainly not the worst. We have other clients who are experiencing worse renewals than that at the moment, so we continue to advocate for that. One of the things that, uh, Ms. Duke and I will be working on, uh, very, very soon in the near future is whether or not it would be worth considering a slightly increased specific deductible, which could bring that renewal down to about a percentage point, so almost flat compared to last year. Gene therapy is also another one that's a little bit in place, so this is a, this is a insurance policy that protects you against the highest-cost drugs, not regular drugs, um, that, uh, that many members would make use of, but kind of those one-in-a-million cases, uh, where the drug itself might be a one-time administration, but it might cost three million dollars, right? Very, it certainly hasn't happened in Lincoln Parish, uh, to this point. It's unlikely to occur, but that's what that coverage is for. The increase for the coming year is actually pretty significant, it's thirty-eight percent increase. Due to some of the other recommendations that we are making at this time, it may be worth considering letting that policy go for next year. And then that leads us to the recommendation on the premiums. And Ms. Duke, how, how much, or maybe, maybe at this point, it's probably just best to say, we're recommending a four point seven percent increase, okay? That's about half of what the national trend is in terms of increased costs from twenty twenty five, looking into, uh, twenty twenty six, but we feel confident that that four point seven percent increase is going to cover all the incurred claims, uh, that the group will experience in twenty twenty six for a couple of reasons. And so if we flip to the next couple of pages, one of those reasons is a couple of suggested tweaks, not, not big changes, but minor tweaks to the plan design. One is on maximum out-of-pocket, so that's kind of the maximum threshold that a member would pay over the course of the calendar year, and if they reach that level afterwards, the plan, the Lincoln Parish School Board plan, will cover a hundred percent of the cost past that. So we recommend on both the active plan and the retirees to move that threshold from five thousand up to sixty-five hundred. And then on the pharmacy side, you see the two co-pays that are shown in highlighting, we're recommending that the, uh, generic or tier one, the least expensive, uh, drugs that, uh, that are available, that that co-pay be reduced to ten dollars from twenty-five for the current, uh, plan for actives and from fifteen for the retiree plan. And that the tier three, so that is, that's some of the more expensive name-brand drugs, would move from a hundred to a hundred and twenty. So all that together actually reduces just by a slight amount. It reduces the actuarial value of the two plans, which basically means it's gonna save a little bit of money. We anticipate twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That's a, that's a relatively conservative estimate, but that's what the impact of those changes would be. All right? And the other reason that, um, we think the, the four point seven percent increase will be sufficient is you see a little bit of that downward turn. This, uh, this IBNR, which is an acronym, it basically means that we're taking into account, it's an actuarial calculation, that takes into account claims history plus a view towards future trend, so potential increases in the next year. And already you see where, uh, that had been continually increasing month over month, year over year for quite a long time, we're seeing that with a little bit of downward trend this year. So that's good news. And then the second, uh, actually, I guess I'm up to the free. So the third piece of good news is the, the pharmacy contract. We've got, uh, something called the Managed Pharmacy Alliance with Brown and Brown. And essentially, it's, uh, our team of pharmacists and some other specialists who negotiate on your behalf and many of our other clients to get the best top-line pricing, so ingredient costs, uh, and things like that, top-line pricing for your pharmaceuticals, and then the best rebate contracts that are possible. And so just real quick snapshot look, if we had the exact same claims filled on the pharmacy side in twenty twenty six as we've had in twenty twenty five, the plan would pay almost nine percent less. So that's, again, very, very good news. And so all three of those, uh, recommendations contribute to balancing what we know is gonna be something like eight, eight and a half, could, could be close to nine percent national trend, uh, increase next year for medical and pharmacy, but then the four point seven is, is very, very confidently realistic, uh, for Lincoln Parish School Board. And then the last thing I'll mention, if, if it's, if I still can, is, uh, the Samaritan Fund. That's something that's brand new, um, in, in terms of a suggestion. Uh, it's been in place for not quite ten years now, but more and more of our Brown and Brown, uh, colleagues are seeing this work very, very effectively with, uh, other groups, uh, around the region and really around the country. Essentially what it does is it pairs together donated funds, so funds that are raised from philanthropy, funds that are raised from, uh, nonprofit organizations that have a specific mention, uh, excuse me, a specific mission that, uh, is, is wanting to address the highest cost medical needs, things like, you know, cancer for children or muscular dystrophy, you know, the, the, things where there's a, there's a nonprofit that's been founded to really try to move the needle on some of these, uh, these most needy medical conditions. So it pairs together those donor-raised resources with folks who self-identify from across our member population, and they say, well, I wanna see if I could be paired up with this. And when there's a match, the members' costs go down to zero. They don't pay a monthly premium, they don't pay at the doctor's office, at the hospital, they don't pay for pharmaceuticals. When there's a match, that would be approved, uh, by, by the board, uh, then that member's costs go to zero, and they would transition to their own specific plan, which also means that they will not contribute to these rising costs of, of the whole group plan. So it really ends up being a win-win. It's hard to estimate exactly what the impact would be. Could be a savings of a hundred thousand dollars, it could be savings of two hundred thousand dollars or more. It just depends on who those, uh, successful candidates would be. But again, uh, at Brown and Brown, we're seeing that work time and time again, uh, where we've rolled out the Samaritan Fund program and really gotten some, uh, some great success stories and really happy families. So, all right, so that brings me to the end of my book.
I still have another question.
Yes, sir.
So even with that proposed, uh, sixty-five hundred dollar increase, would you revisit the benefit that would accrue to our members?
Yes, so, so that's actually a slight reduction in benefit. So we're, we're back to this chart here where the maximum out-of-pocket is recommended to change from five thousand to sixty-five hundred. That's actually a slight reduction in benefit to the member. So just as a, as a, kind of a simple example, suppose we have Jason as a member, I'm a teacher in your, uh, in your district, and I have a hundred thousand dollars in claims, right? Whatever, uh, condition I'm dealing with. That means over the course of the year, right now in twenty twenty five, I would contribute five thousand, and Lincoln Parish would pay the rest. Next year, if I had those same claims, I would pay sixty-five hundred. So my contribution does go up by fifteen hundred, right? That being said, it's a maximum, right? It actually does not impact very many people. It's gonna be between three and four percent of your population, so with, uh, the employees and their spouses and their children, all said and done, there's about eighteen hundred plus that are enrolled, maybe about fifty might see that change. And the ones who see it are the ones who have been, uh, making use of the plan to the greatest extent. Does that answer the question?
The other benefit that we made a change, we made this late, and it didn't get in the chart, was changing the maximum out-of-pocket for the family.
For families, yes.
Yes, 'cause right now, I think it's, um.
Fifteen thousand.
For individual, it's for individual, it was.
Five?
It was five.
Three.
For the family, it was for three people, fifteen.
Correct.
And we're moving that down to ten thousand dollars. So that is going to be a savings if there, if there is large medical claim in a family unit. And then also the out-of, out-of, out-of network amount is, I think, the maximum, thirty thousand.
So ten for the individual, thirty for the family.
Right, and the thirty is now going to be twenty.
Twenty.
For out-of-network benefits.
Right. So those family maximum out-of-pockets would actually be an increase in benefit from fifteen down to thirteen, and from thirty out-of-network down to twenty.
Right.
So that, that's actually a movement in the other direction. Thank you.
So what's the success rate as far as the Samaritan?
I don't have a number, but when, maybe it's best to describe it this way. Um, and I don't know if this translates to a rate exactly, but I'll, I'll describe it and see if that answers the question. The, the invitation actually is sent to the entire community, so everyone is invited to apply. From those that apply, Samaritan Fund asks them to sign a HIPAA release so that Samaritan Fund can actually look at their medical records, what the prognosis is. And of those, they're going to find the ones that project out to have the highest level of claim costs, which are gonna be those neediest medical conditions, like the cancers or like, uh, debilitating diseases, right, or transplant surgery, something like that. And so once that's been identified, then the success rate is essentially a hundred percent. As long as you approve, yes, we're, we're willing to engage the Samaritan, uh, person, or Samaritan Fund for this person who is qualified, then, then it's done. It's, it's a win-win, and they will have that zero cost.
Okay, are there any other comments or, uh, questions from board members? Okay. Are there any questions?
I wanted to wrap up. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, we got a lot on the, the night. So I, um, just to recap, uh, I think Jason did a great job explaining the renewal and the change in.
and the changes that we're making. He explained the 4.7% rate increase and I'm included in here back and a part of what the board is getting this out to members as well as far as what that share is going to be. Again, because the school board participates in a large portion of that cost, we are going to be bearing the large percentage of the increased funding for, to make up that 4.7%. But those are going to affect with January payrolls if approved by the board tonight. The other item is, we talked about the dental plan. We feel like this is, this is going to be about a $70,000 savings to the school system as well, changing to a fully insured plan. There is a benefit there, but also in the dental program that we have going in place, we have some benefits, unused benefits can roll over into the new plan year where there can be increased benefits available to members later on instead of our current maximum annual of $1,250, I believe. I think, what was that, Scott, $22,500 is the maximum.
It could open additional $1,000, yes, ma'am.
So that's a great benefit there too. So we feel like that would really help a lot of families out. There's a couple of other things other than approving the Samaritan Fund as well. We do have stop laws, like he mentioned, in gene therapy that we're still making the decisions on. And so the recommendation would be for the board to approve these changes and then also grant superintendent permission to contract these final agreements to go ahead and get these programs in place for the renewal for January 1. So is that clear to the board?
So are there any other questions or comments from board members? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Okay, runner, can I get a second, Mr. Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? How she carry? Thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, next up is 8.7, a full payment of the November salary supplement check. Ms. Juanita Duke.
Okay, so again, we come to the board in October to request permission to distribute the November salary supplement check. This is our 13th check. This will be paid out on break of November payroll on November 20. We are recommending an increase in the supplement compared to what we paid out last year, a $600 increase for certified staff and then a $300 increase for support staff for a total of $2,316 for certified and $1,158 for support staff. We just request permission for you to approve the distribution.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Ms. Duke, could you repeat the number for the certified?
Okay, it's $2,316.
Are there any other questions from the public? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion, that, that is.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the next item is business.
Report.
Yeah, reports. Reports. Okay, so we have 9.1 is the boundary study report. Mr. Trotter Hunt.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Williams. And thanks to the board for the opportunity to be here tonight and thanks for the opportunity for HGA to help with this important project. I've got lots of review and I've got a few slides, so I'm going to jump right into it. This is the agenda, I'm going to talk about the team that's been working on this, goals that we had and guiding principles. We got some input from the public, other considerations and kind of upfront planning, and then the phases we're planning or proposing to tackle the project and some scenarios we considered and finally the recommendations we have at this point. And to talk about next steps. So HGA, we work in a variety of industries for this project. Myself and Ernie Broussard to Thalade, he's a senior planner. I was a city planner and a public planner in Lake Charles and Cameron Calca Shu Parish. We also involve Flow Analytics. You can see Ethan Kemp and Jenny were really the leads from Flow. It's kind of small for those over here, but Flow has worked on boundary studies, student enrollment forecasting projects across the country, from very large school districts to very small school districts. So they're the real technicians, did a lot of the data work and we'll talk about as we progress. As far as goals, we wanted to first forecast enrollment for the next 10 years to use that for planning. We got some community input on priorities to keep in mind. We talked with the district team regarding issues and priorities that internally we thought would be important. And then we developed a series of rezoning scenarios. Talked about those pros and cons and tonight we're here to identify rezoning recommendations for the school board. Guiding principles, we did a survey, it was out for three or four weeks. We had over 1,600 respondents, 75% of those are children that are currently enrolled in Lincoln Parish schools. We asked them to force rank these four areas with one being the most important and four being least important. You can see that the number one, the item getting the most number one vote, 35%, was equitable access to, for students to academic and extracurricular programs. Number two was minimal transitions between schools. Number three was minimal travel distance, so moving towards a neighborhood school approach. And number four was diversity. I wanted to mention at this point that it came to my attention really just last week that while the school district was under a desegregation order, race absolutely had to be taken into consideration in looking at school zoning. But once the school district achieved unitary status, race can no longer be taken into consideration. That'd be a violation of the 14th Amendment. This was mentioned and I talked with Bob Hammons, Mr. Durick put me in touch, the attorney for the school district. And so that was just a learning for me and wanted to mention that at the outset. You can take into consideration socioeconomic diversity, which is not racial diversity. As far as kind of some background work we did, Lincoln Parish, the district did some data gathering to give us school enrollment details for the past 10 years. And that was used with some other publicly available information. Really Flow Analytics did the work to develop enrollment forecasting. I'll show some highlights of that. The school district also gathered school capacity details, especially the Ruston City Schools that we're looking at more closely in Phase One. Mike Walpole did some school condition appraisals for us, looking at the different buildings. We reached out to AE Phillips in Lincoln Prep just to see if they had any plans pending in the area. Obviously they affect our enrollment. I think there's always things being discussed, but there's nothing imminent that they could communicate. We visit with Boys and Girls Club. We'd really like to, whatever changes we make, reserve some capacity in our elementary schools to afford us a partnership with Boys and Girls Club. They have after-school programs, their facility in town is out of capacity. They have a long waiting list. We've seen really good results in Dubach and Boys and Girls Club can point to good results really wherever they have programs and they would very much like to partner. So we'll talk more about that. We visited the city of Ruston, well, the city of Ruston, Mayor Walker. I would say what we're going to be talking about tonight in Phase One is not any construction of any new schools. But when that time comes, the city would very much like to partner with the rebuilding roads if necessary to access new areas. I would say that Mayor Walker's number one, where his mind goes to when you talk about the schools is just the bus lines, the drop off lines. Ensure we have safety and pick up the drop off of our students. So as far as the enrollment forecast, the methodology they use, they basically look at historical trends as far as grade progressions when kids may come into and out of the district, well, into, out of the grades. You know, there may be some other, you know, there's other charter and public school options that some kids may go there for some grades and not others. So they look at the history there. They look at recent immigration or out migration, births. They look at recent neighborhoods or permitting for neighborhoods to be built to factor all of that into some forecasts. They actually do very detailed forecasts by grade. They have a low, medium, high scenario. This gives a summary. You can see they show K5 enrollment expected to decline slightly over the 10-year period, grade 6 to grade 7 enrollment expected to decrease about 3.5% with 9 through 12 expected to increase. Obviously, you know, if you're forecasting fifth through 12th grades and you've got some trends for kindergarten or fourth, those are easy to forecast. And a good example is this year's, they completed this and then we got the enrollment details for kindergarten and I think 150 plus more kids than is normal. I don't know if that's an anomaly or if that's a new trend. So a forecast is a forecast and you're going to need to update it continually. But these are what we use, you know, kind of a, I would say that Flow's feedback, they've done these across the nation and that a lot of schools are seeing their enrollment declining. So just to have roughly flat enrollment forecasted is in a better situation than a lot of school districts. So then what they do is they take the parish and they break it up into planning areas around the outskirts of the parish where we're not going to probably change any zoning lines. They keep the groupings big in the central area where we may change the zones. They make them smaller. It's also denser population there. So if you could see it better, there's numbers kind of indicates the number of students in each of the different planning areas. And then we can run scenarios, change a zone, see if that affects the enrollment at each of the schools. Okay, with that background, talking with the district team, our initial thoughts on priorities was to break this effort into two phases. Phase one would be a focus on utilizing existing facilities, not trying to build anything new in major capital projects. A top priority to reduce the number of transitions in the city of Ruston is to change the grade configurations. I'm going to ask Ms. Howell to speak in the next slide about the, I actually came to learn that her doctoral work is around the benefits to student performance of minimizing those transitions. So she'll speak to those, to that here next. We also went to like a neighborhood schools to reduce bus routes. When you reduce bus routes, you can move to later start times. And if there's any opportunities to close some facilities to save some operational costs for the district. And finally, like I mentioned, we wanted to have a plan to reserve some capacity, some rooms for after-school partnership of the Boys and Girls Club. I guess just for a little more expansion there. Teachers typically don't want their rooms to be used and so we have to, we wanted to think about preserving two or three classrooms that would just be for Boys and Girls Club. Phase two, which would come later, we're not going to talk much about tonight, would be exploring new facilities. So we get inside where and how those would be, those districts would be comprised. That would be an opportunity to move to fewer schools. Again, if you have fewer schools, that's going to just mean fewer transitions and lower administrative costs. If, in Phase Two, we do think Ruston Elementary is our elementary school in the district with really the worst building condition. So either some significant renovations or closing and building new would need to be thought of at that point. You can see the fourth one there is explore our school zones for improved socioeconomic diversity. And lastly, if we're going to have further phasing, maybe waiting on the west side of town to see how the Bucky's effect plays out. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ellen.
I'll be free. Trying to get to a football game at Ruston Junior High. Okay, I want to just come before you tonight. I have three personas I'm dealing with here. First, the role I'm most proud of is mom. I have two Lincoln Parish school kids. And with my two kids, we've been to Elpec, Glenview, Hill Press, Ruston Elementary, IA Lewis and Ruston Junior High. We've had an amazing, amazing experience. Great teachers, great admin. I'm also the chief academic officer for Lincoln Parish Schools. And thirdly, like Mr. Hunt mentioned, I'm a doctoral student at Louisiana Tech. And in June of 2024, I picked the topic of transitions between schools. It was something that was interesting to me. Two of my research pathways included academic and social impacts of transitions and then the role of school structures and grade span configurations in transition success. And so I just want to share just a little bit of the research that I have found along the way that I think are relevant to this topic. For our purposes tonight, I'm not sharing any Lincoln Parish data. This is just information from the body of literature. Okay, so the first thing is transition effects on achievement. And there are many of these studies that show that more transitions often correlate to dips in student performance. We see also early transitions can be tough on kids. In the literature, particularly that K3 pivot where we're learning to read and then reading to learn can be tough for kids in transitions at this time. The research shows can show some lasting reading gaps for students. I think we are all acutely aware of how important it is for our kids to be able to read on grade level by the end of grade three. And these achievement declines are, throughout the transition points are documented nationally. Two studies that really spoke to me as I read, one was from 2012 where the research showed that a single school change could actually be the equivalent of a setback of more than 10 instructional days. And that really struck me when I considered compounded over five transitions in the city school system, what that could mean for kids. There was also a more recent study from 2018. This was in Texas. Students enrolled in configurations with the least amount of transitions outperform their counterparts. So that was one that spoke to me as well. Moving on to belonging and relationships. One particular concept that I came across was something called a new-to-school effect. And I didn't know there was a name for it, but there's a name for it. And there is a study that talks about alignment between sending and receiving schools and how every time a kid transitions, they have this fresh start or new-to-school effect. And it refers to that short-term academic and social adjustment period when kids move to a new school. And it's documented that test scores and engagement can drop during this time, not necessarily because of kid's ability, but because they're doing that hard work of adjusting to new routines, rules, procedures, that kind of thing. School climate and engagement. One study that is really a seminal study in the field is that frequent transitions can interrupt that match between students' developmental needs and those environments that are designed to support them. That is of particular interest to me for students with disabilities because we want to have that sense of stability and connection. And then last, and I sort of already mentioned this, just the idea of equity and early literacy. We know early literacy is a critical determinant of long-term achievement and the frequent moves can delay proficiency. Another 2018 study showed that transitions disproportionately affect students in poverty who benefit most from stable grade spans with fewer moves. The studies that I looked at, there were several I decided not to include just because of small sample size or what have you validity. The ones I mostly looked at include K12 systems with diverse populations, both rural and urban. What I wanted to share with you. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Everything is based on research-based strategies. And if you would, I'd like to know some of them. Because the population of students in this system has to come first. You know, you can go look at any system, but if it's not, if it's going to make up a Lincoln Parish, it's worthless. You know, and I'm just being serious. You know, we can't, what's good for one is not good for all. And I'm sorry, but, you know, being the prince of all these years, I couldn't treat everybody the same way. They didn't learn in the same way. So this is all I'm saying. What's good for one, not good for 20. But I'd love to hear the research-based strategies and where they came from. You know, you mentioned it, what you didn't manage to, mention my school or where you got your research from.
I can provide that for you.
That's what I want to see. Because, you know, I'm always good, proof is in the pudding.
And like you, like I said, I projected about 30% of the studies because I didn't feel like they were relevant to my client.
If it's not research-based or based on just school makeup, you know? Because, you know, reading is number one, instructions is number one, these kids' success is number one. You notice I don't waive me and nothing except the teacher's salary, because might as part of this is ensure that these kids get what they came to school to live for, and that's a good education, not mediocre. You gotta treat them all. They get it in Lincoln Parish, well, you might as well, because hell, if you can't fit the bill, don't put the shoes on.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson, thank you. I thought that was very relevant to what we're looking at and.
But you know, you have to. Being an educator, it's hard to sit and look. I'm not going to sit and look. I'm not going to cast a name and not tell it. But when you a imitator, I'm coming for you. You know, it's two people you don't imitate as a teacher. I'm gonna get you, and a preacher, the Lord gonna get you. I'm.
So with that background, I was just gonna show four of the scenarios, we considered several scenarios, and then finish with what we laid down as our recommendation. So phase one, scenario one, was to leave Shudrent, Simsboro, Ruston High School, Ruston Junior High School with their current boundaries, close Cypress Springs, and close the pre-K Center, convert Dubach, Ruston, Glenview, Hillcrest, and IA Lewis to pre-K to 6th grade neighborhood schools, and then move the central office from here to the current pre-K Center, move the bus storage from the junior high to the pre-K Center, and I could sell the current officer, I guess that'd really be for the school board to determine what to do with the current central office. So we drew the boundaries for this scenario in this manner. IA Lewis is a little bit smaller school, so we made the IA Lewis district in the southwest a little smaller, made Glenview a little larger. We carried the Ruston Elementary School District a little bit to the north to try to improve the socioeconomic diversity. So some of the pros were fewer transitions, savings through closing facilities, able to close Cypress Springs and pre-K Center, simplified bus routes by going back to more neighborhood schools, improved socioeconomic diversity, and getting that bus storage out of what's going to become a very high-traffic area with Bucky's. Some of the cons, anytime you're talking about closing a school, it's going to be tough, so very strong community affiliation with Cypress Springs. The, Mr. Young, Mr. Duritt made me aware that the teacher accreditation goes K-5, 6-8, and 9-12, so trying to spread our 6th grade teachers across more schools will be, the challenge can be overcome, but it won't be somewhat of a challenge. There is, like I said, IA Lewis is a smaller school, so it is a capacity challenge, and the school zones are not really geographically intuitive. That may be a little hard to explain to parents, but this, we do have the capacity to do this while IA Lewis is a smaller school, we still have capacity. Another scenario we looked at was to leave Shudrent, Simsboro, and Ruston High with current boundaries, close IA Lewis in the pre-K Center, convert Dubach, Ruston, Glenview, Hillcrest, Cypress Springs to pre-K to 5, and move the 6th grade to Ruston Junior High. Still have the same movement, closing central office and moving the bus storage to the pre-K Center. For this scenario, we went a little more geographically intuitive, lines for the schools. So the pros of this approach, or this scenario, again, fewer transitions, savings through closing two facilities, again, simple five bus routes. There are good curriculum and extracurricular synergies for the 6th or 8th grades. This is a more geographically intuitive school zoning, and we are removing the bus storage from the high-traffic area. Again, anytime you're talking about closing a school, it's going to be a challenge, strong community affiliation with IA Lewis. The really downside of this is that we don't have the capacity at Ruston Junior High, so it'd have to be an expansion. This really fails the test of no capital investment for phase one. Also, there's a long-term logistics question at Ruston Junior High. We talked a lot about what's going to be the Bucky's effect, and just a hesitant, hesitancy to invest in Ruston Junior High until we see how that plays out, if this could really be a long-term challenge. So we really thought this failed the test and wasn't a viable option for the way we defined phase one. Phase one scenario three, this was leave Shudrent, Dubach, Simsboro, IA Lewis, Ruston Junior High, and Ruston High School with their current boundaries and zones and grade configuration, close Ruston Elementary, we talked about this because it's the oldest school in the poor shape, and then convert Dubach, Glenview, Hillcrest, and Cypress Springs to pre-K to 5th grade neighborhood schools, and still move the central office to the pre-K Center. This is the zoning we were looking at for this scenario, kind of running the zones north-south. Some of the pros, again, fewer transitions, we talked about the benefits of that, savings through closing facilities. As I mentioned, Ruston Elementary is in the force condition as a building. This zoning does provide improved socioeconomic diversity, and again, we're still moving the bus storage from the high-traffic area. Unfortunately, our school capacities don't allow this. It would be too many kids, and they wouldn't have enough classrooms. So this actually failed the test as well. So what we do recommend is leave Dubach, Shudrent, Simsboro, IA Lewis, Ruston Junior High, and Ruston High with their current boundaries and grade configuration, and only close the pre-K Center. So we'll convert Ruston, Glenview, and Hillcrest to Cypress Springs Elementary Schools to pre-K to 5th grade neighborhood schools. Still move the central office to the pre-K Center, move the bus storage there as well. We believe the more geographically intuitive zoning is the best approach. This is fewer transitions, we are saving through closing the central office, this does achieve simplified, shorter bus routes, geographically intuitive school zones, as I mentioned, and moving the bus storage from a high-traffic area. Really, the only kind of this is that, you know, we could take advantage of some additional cost savings through some school consolidation, but we think this is a very, very good first step in removing several transitions for the kids. So this is what we have as recommendation for phase one. As far as next steps, so, you know, we talked ahead of time, and I don't think it's perfect to take a vote at this meeting and just put this out there for public input. I know the school district has been working on a survey to put out for the next several weeks to get input from the community. That said, we've hoped to get some good input in the next few weeks, because I think the school district really feels like a decision needs to be made either at the November, December meeting, if we want to try to implement this plan for the '26, '27 school year. So if can't get comfortable, you know, in that timeline, it'll just have to be delayed. As I mentioned, phase two could include building new schools or continuing to renovate existing schools. We've just had some preliminary discussions about that, but really need additional time to evaluate options, costs, financing options, and bill toward recommendations, and not planning that until after phase one decision. And possibly it'd be good to implement phase one and let that play out for some period of time to see how that's going, or additional decisions are made. That's really all I had today. Welcome, any questions?
So are there any, sorry, are there any questions or comments with board members?
I would just say thank you Trotter and your team, Flow Analytics team, for y'all's hard work on this project. I know Mr. Mack recommended that we talked last spring about getting a third party involved in this planning, and I think you guys did a tremendous job on the study, and I appreciate your efforts as a friend and as a community member.
And also, I want to mention too that, and I've made this recommendation, and I want to be very transparent to the community, that we need to look at possibly engaging to other consultants, a demographer, when you talk about the socioeconomic status. And also, we, there is another consultant that has expertise in here. He's from Lincoln Parish, well-respected superintendent from down south, engaging in conversations. It's just, and it's just my opinion that we just need to get the public more involved in the decision-making.
Yeah, I was going to say, Dr. Williams did arrange a call for us with each of those, and great input, and I think the best input was thinking through phase two and the approach to get community input involvement in a very deliberate way.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I mean.
And I know you've done a lot of research, but I guess the big issue and the big unknown is Bucky's. You know, no matter what we do, we need to possibly look at doing away with that school, and I know that's going to cost a fortune, but it's really going to impact that school, especially if we look at bringing 6th grade to that, to this area. But anyway, there's definitely a horn in the side, going to always be.
Yeah, so I think it'll be good to remove the bus storage from over there. You're just gonna, every bus will have to deal with it otherwise.
Because the traffic's tremendous there now, and it's going to triple and quadruple or 10 times more.
We'll say if we can get the buses out over there, if we move the central office, then we're really talking about 30 minutes in the morning, getting kids in and out of school, and then 30 minutes in the afternoon. Right, then we get them back home, and it wouldn't be, if the central office is moved and we move the bus barn, then it would be just those two times, and the rest of the day, the Bucky's traffic can flow and have added, we'll be having school for the time being until someone comes along and offers us something that you can't return. You can't return.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Okay, next up, personnel, Mr. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So this report has one administrative retirement, two faculty recommendations, one child nutrition resignation, two child nutrition recommendations, and two transportation recommendations.
Thank you.
Actually, wait, I'd like to comment.
David Pender is on that list, and I would like to tell her congratulations on an incredible career. I don't know how long, how long is this?
It's been a long time. But it's been a fun time.
An incredible employee, an incredible parent in this district, friend to this board, friend of this central office. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Robin is one part of me and Seth is another part of me.
Take two out of the field, you're fine. And you split the difference.
Pender has been around and taught me in high school, so me and my wife both, so been a big part of our life the whole time, and I appreciate all that. Helped me with bookkeeping and basketball and keeping me in some ballgames back during my career, so thank you for all you've done.
Have a lot of great memories.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Pender, for your service. Also, the next up is the sales tax receipt for the September 2025. Yes, one to do.
Yes, we have the sales tax collection report for September impacted. Collections are 1.3% higher than they were this month last year, so overall collections for the first three months of the year is 7.79%. And that's, that's.
Are there any comments from board members? Next up is financial update for the August 2025.
Do you have our financial report for our general funds and special revenue funds impacted as well? I apologize, the fiscal year titles of the top of the columns are a year behind, but they are current, it is current year data. I apologize for that. It'll be fixed on the next report, going forward. But total general fund revenues, we achieved 10.75% of the budget total expenditures. We've expended about 9% of the budget in the general fund. Total special revenue funds combined, we have received about 3.24% of our total revenue budget, and we have spent about 7.7% for the first two months of this fiscal year.
And any comments from board members? Next up is the health plan update for 2025.
Okay, so we have the August report for health fund. This has total contributions for the month of August of $1.44 million. Total planned expenses paid out this month is $1.6 million, a reduction of our net assets of about $150,000. Total cumulative for the year, this is just past the midpoint, well, eight months into the year, we have total planned costs of $10.5 million compared to $11.5 million this time last year.
Thank you, Mr. Pender. Okay, the next item is the report from Superintendent Duritt.
Okay, just a couple things, of course, we're out next week for fall break. Everybody enjoys the week off and gets a rest and relaxation, our teachers, administrators, and everyone. We have finished our literacy and numeracy screenings in K-3, and we're waiting to get that data back from the state to share the literacy, the beginning of the year data with you all. Hopefully, we get it back, we'll share it at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Are there any reports, comments, or observations from the board members? Also, I want to mention, Ms. Henderson called me today, and she wanted to inform the board that she is in hospital with her husband. We're sending our balls and prayers with her as well. If there are no other business, can I get a motion of adjournment?
No.
Okay. And then this is.